Welcome to the regular meeting in City Council, November 5th, 2018. This time everyone will rise and will say the pledge allegiance to the flag led by Councilman Forrest Fleming.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated.
I'd like to now ask the Reverend Larry Britt, chaplain at Morganton Department of Public Safety, to deliver the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Almighty God, by your grace, we have been brought to this day and to this place in safety. Guide us by your grace to make wise decisions. Strengthen us by your might to have the courage to carry out those decisions for the good of your people. Guide the people of this land as we cast ballots in tomorrow's election. Grant us grace to cast our ballots with the good of your people as our guiding principle. Finally, today and always, grant us peace. All this we pray through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Larry, so much. Next, I'd like to introduce our council to my far right, Windecato Council member, Forrest Fleming, Mayor Pro Tem, Louie Vina, our city attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simmons, City Council. Chris Hawkins, City Council. Kelly Russell, our recording secretary, and Becky Brinkley, who's interpreting for our deaf community. We have one safety pin to award tonight. Alan Clark. Sally, would you like to make a comment about Alan? Or some comments about Alan?
Absolutely. Podium. And we have decided that for those employees who is that we invite them to come to a council meeting to get that because we're very proud of the service and excited to get to continue adding to those years. And I believe that Councilman Simmons is going to give you your pin.
Just thank you for opportunities served, Sidney.
Alan, I know you sent you as a pup.
Yeah. A minute long ago.
Makes me feel old.
He's still a pup.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We have several public advocacy issues. Tonight, we have a proclamation for the Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. And I'm going to read that proclamation. The proclamation for National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, November 10th through the 18th, 2018. Whereas for over 26 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness has sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas there are many organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness, including the Meeting Place Mission, Burke United Christian Ministries, Partners Behavioral Health Management, the Outreach Center, Burke County United Way, the House of Refuge, Options Incorporated, Christ-Centered Recovery Program, North Carolina Vocational Rehabilitation, Burke Recovery, Veterans Representatives, and many, many community partners. And whereas the City Council recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in the city of Morganton, now therefore be it resolved that I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, and the City Council hereby proclaim November 10th through 18th, 2018, as National Homeless and Homelessness Awareness Week in Morganton. Be it further resolved that the City Council encourages all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private and public nonprofit services, service entities. Adopted the 5th day of November, 2018, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, Clerk. Going to ask Forrest Fleming if he would present that to Allison Asbell. If Allison come forward to the microphone. And like to make any comments you'd like to make, please.
Allison, it is my distinct privilege to present this proclamation to you, and I would wish to thank you for all of your efforts in taking care of those that are hungry and those that are homeless. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Comments if you'd wish.
So, one of the reasons that we had this proclamation done, for those who don't know, Burke Cares is comprised of some organizations here in Burke County that help those that are underserved. And we have an event scheduled November 14th, and it is called the Burke Eye Care Tour. And those who participate will go on a tour to visit those agencies who help those who are hungry and homeless here in the community. So, please register and please come tour some of those facilities. Registration is only $10, so please come and see what we do to help those in our community. And again, I thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Under announcements, election day is tomorrow, November the 8th. November the 6th. November the 11th is Veterans Day. City Hall will be closed, and City Hall will be closed on November the 11th. City Hall will also be closed November 22nd through the 23rd for Thanksgiving Day holiday. The trash pickup Thanksgiving week will be as normal, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Thursday's pickup will be a day early on Wednesday. At this point in time, I'd like to call on Scott to make several announcements about the month of November, please.
It's leaf season.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak about solid waste collection. November is our bumper month, leaf collection and solid waste. Holidays in the middle, it's just a really great time to provide services to our citizens. So, I'd like to point out a few things that are frequent asked questions or points of interest and points to emphasize. And the other thing that I want to do is to comment and thank the staff and the preparation of the website, so information is readily ready available on the website. But we are proud of our backyard collection for solid waste. It's a premium service. Very few cities in North Carolina continue to provide backyard service. And I'd like for you to understand that we have the support equipment with the Kubota off-the-road vehicles and with the Chevrolet Colorado's, which back in your driveway to collect your trash. And what this affords you, the opportunity to do, is to not have to pull your garbage out each week, but to leave it at the entrance, at the back of your drive entrance, and we can pick it up there. And if you have a car that's in your driveway, then you'll need to put your trash to the rear of your car, or you'll need to move your car before the collection. But please take advantage of that backyard collection. It doesn't help the appearance of our streets, and it really is no service to us for you to bring your trash to the curb. I've got a slide, please, Chad. And again, I want to direct you to the website about different things that you can either locate on the website by two methods. You can go to the resident selection at the top bar, and then it will provide all the city services, or you can go to the Public Works Department and list all the services that we provide. So, either way, there's a good explanation of all our services to include the type of containers that we require. Our ordinance says that you have to have a 35-gallon container with a tight fitting lid. There's two reasons for that. The reason for the size limonome container is because the reason, the method at which we collect with the support vehicles, it's a manual operation where our employees are having to lift your can above shoulder height to dump it in the hopper of the support vehicle. So, it needs to be a 35-gallon can or smaller. The big rollouts, if you bag your trash and they can pull the trash out by bags, that's satisfactory, but we'd prefer the smaller containers. And if it doesn't have the capacity for this week's garbage, but the ordinance actually says that you can't put a plastic bag out on the street longer than 12 hours before your scheduled collection. So, let's minimize that litter on the street. The other thing that's available on our website is the schedule of collection, and there's a, there's a list by street, or there's an interactive map. And Chad, if you'll zoom into the next level, to the street level, you can actually zoom in on the map that you saw on the previous screen down to your house or your residential location, and the key will tell you what day is your collection. So, I think that's pretty impressive, and you may want to look around the neighborhood and see how your, how your property looks from the overhead. All right? We mentioned the holiday schedule. The holiday schedule is also on our website. Thanksgiving, we will collect Thursday. The holiday meal collection will be Thursday's route on Wednesday before the holiday. When we get into December, we've got another two-day holiday. So, our employees will work on Christmas Eve, which is a Monday, for Monday's collection. Christmas Day is on Tuesday. Tuesday's route will not be collected on Christmas Day, but for the remainder of the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, each of those collection days will be one day delayed. And that information is on the website for you to review. Okay? I'd like to talk a moment about special collection. This is always a point of interest and question, and if you ever have any questions, each of the special items is also described in detail on the website, or you're always welcome to call our office and schedule a pickup, or ask, or we'll try to address any questions about your collection, or ask a supervisor to come work with you about your best, best method of collection. But a television on the street is a $25 charge because we have to pick that up separate from garbage and take it to Burke County for recycling. Bulky items, appliances need to be recycled, and they're taken separate from garbage. Furniture is a large item. So, all of those special services, for many years now, 12 years, we've had a, had a $25 fee for those special individual services. I'd like to talk about excess yard waste. That's always a question. If you're trimming your trees, then if it can be included with the regular collection, that's part of your monthly fee. If it's a truckload or a large amount, then we'll work with you, and you will be assessed a fee for an excessive load of yard waste. Loose leaf collection. I've got a slide on the loose leaf collection. Our loose leaf collection is in, well, the previous slide was the neighborhood, but the, the intent is we've got four routes. And if you go on the website, and again, there's four different truck routes which correlate to our solid waste collection routes. But if you go to the website, you can actually key into a tab, and that's the next slide, please, Chad, where we record and provide for you our schedule of collection, and that's the history of collection, because we found that it's more expedient to post where we are and show you the sequence of streets that follow in route rather than block areas of the community for collection and then wait to collect on a schedule that we know we can meet. So, if you want to know when we will be collecting leaves on your street, you can go to this tab. You can see when we will last collected leaves on your street and anticipate within a week or 10 days that we will be returning to your street by neighborhood or location. If you ever have any questions, again, please call our office at 438-5248. Couple real quick points to bag yard waste. We collect that on Friday. That's yard trimming in plastic bags or leaves. Make sure that there's trash trimmings, and it rains on it, and it's, oh, man can't pick it up. So, so recognize that we're picking up that up by hand. Recycling, you can go to our website and find out information about our convenience center recycling or curbside recycling. It will give you a link directly to Simply Green if you would like to contract for curbside collection. Another special service that we provide is a familiar term called the Good Habit Rabbit Truck, but we work with citizens. If you've got a large amount of solid waste for disposal, then we will deliver a truck to your driveway for you to load, and then we will take it to the landfill for you. And there's a base charge of $25 for that truck. And then if you incur an additional disposal fee or sorting fee, then we'll help you anticipate what those fees will be. So, those subject to your questions are the points that I wanted to make.
Do you want to talk about leaves and vacuums and not putting other stuff?
That's right, thank you. Loose leaf collection, another point I did want to, to emphasize is that during the leaf collection process, we're using vacuum systems where the leaves go through the impeller. So, if you place sticks or bricks or blocks in your leaf pile, it will stop that vacuum and cause damage to the equipment. And that will take us off route and off schedule and potentially a lot of expense in making the repair. So, please make sure that your loose leaves are to the curb when we can reach them with the vacuums, but also that there's no debris hidden in the leaf pile. Thank you for that.
Council, have any questions for Scott?
Okay.
So, if you've got a TV, a couch, and a refrigerator, it's just $125, right? Not 25 per each?
I'll give you a package deal.
Give me a package deal.
Take your truck to your address, and we'll take care of it.
Thank you, Scott.
The other comment I'd like to make is on your agenda. You do have an update, which is a bookkeeping change about the schedule of fees and charges with the solid waste collection being once a week. That change actually occurred 12 years ago. We're just doing the bookwork. So, I'm, I'm not as good on bookwork as, as, as I should be, but that's just an administrative correction. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Next announcement is that City Council and our Cable Commission will have a joint meeting on Tuesday, December the 11th, at 5:30 in the Morganton City Council Chamber to receive information about the digital cable TV transition. I want to announce from Kama, an award from the South Arts for Most Progressive Theater. I'm going to call on Jim Smith. I know he's not asking, didn't expect this. If he'll come forward and tell us about this award, it's, sound like a pretty prestigious award.
Kama is part of an association called South Arts, which is the, the theaters in our southeastern portion of the United States. It's also an organization that has lent mentorship to me as a new director and as, as well as provides networking. We were nominated and received this award for four reasons. Number one, we provided programming and sought out grants to, to include school day shows for our local schools. This past week, we had over 1,000 second graders come and see the Billy Goats Gruff, which is a grant that we got from the Burke County Arts Council. The second place that we excelled at was creating local programming to allow our local artists, musicians, and students to use their own stage. And we were acknowledged through the Gosler Williams Honors Chorus, which actually they're, they're rehearsing tonight at Kama. There's over 100 high school students present a concert tomorrow night at Kama. The third thing that we were recognized for was innovative marketing plans and strategies to increase millennial patronage. Those of you that have been to Kama have seen some younger faces around. And the fourth one, which I'm really, really proud of, is we were nominated from local touring groups, producers that had visited and had done their shows at Kama as a well-organized, clean, performance venue that stood out among the other roadhouses that they performed in. So, I think my staff, and I think the City Council for your support of Kama, it's a very prestigious award among our peers to be nominated. So, I'm glad to serve there.
Thank you, Jim. Speaking of Kama, the show's upcoming events is yesterday, a tribute to the Beatles, which will be Saturday, November 17th, at 7:30. A very electric Christmas, a Lightwire Theater, Thursday, November the 29th, at 7:30. And for our downtown events, we have the Farmer's Market, Saturday, November 17th, at 10 o'clock at North Green Street. The Memorial Tree Lighting and Winter Carnival, Saturday, November 17th, beginning at 5 o'clock. Santa Claus will be in town and downtown Friday and Saturday evenings, beginning November 23rd, from 4 to 7. And carriage rides in downtown Friday and Saturday evenings, beginning November 23rd, from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. Next on our agenda is the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency, number one, Sally.
May I add one thing before we go into that? It is the end of the Farmer's Market season, and we actually, the city works in, in partnership with the Historic Morganton Festival to produce that event and to carry out the Farmer's Market events all year. And as a result, the festival applies for and gets some grant funding to help with that. And so, as we've done our year in reporting to them, looking at that, this year's Farmer's Market generated over $225,000 in sales, and that's a pretty awesome thing and, and something. And it's taken years for it to grow and to get to that point. And there are many Farmer's Markets that happen all over Burke County, but we're pretty fortunate that we've got a great one, and so I want everybody to know that. Nice job with the Farmer's Market. Power Agency. So, this month is election time for seats for the Electricity's Board of Directors. There are two seats available from our power agency. One of those is a majority vote seat, one is a weighted vote seat. Two folks are running, and both of them are, are people that we feel good about supporting, and that's good. Steve Peeler from Lincolnon in the majority vote seat, and Randy McCaslin from High Point in the weighted vote seat. So, in just a week or so, we'll be voting for those folks to take those seats.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, we have nine items. Sally, would you cover those, please?
We do have nine items. Would ask that you consider those in one motion unless somebody wants to talk about something separately. For those of you viewing at home, the first item includes two sets of minutes, minutes from the October 1st regular meeting and also the special meeting that was held just prior to that regular meeting. The ordinance change that Scott referenced earlier, which is cleaning up some language in our ordinance saying, and just clarifying, that our waste, solid waste collection is once a week and not twice a week. The amendment to our public assembly ordinance, which basically deals with events that are occurring on recurring and regular basis at the same location. Herefore, you had to come in and get a permit for that each time, and we are asking for an amendment so that you would really do that once a quarter for events that, that take place multiple times at the same spot. A budget amendment to receive $2,251 and then spend that in our annual settlement for the Fireman's Supplemental Retirement Fund. The application for a certificate of taxi cab franchises, this is our first reading, and we have received three taxi cab franchises. Our only reading, sorry, this will be our only reading. So, once we do it tonight, we'll be done. And then the renewal of our contract for our lobbying services. Nexen Pruitt is the company that Michelle Frazier, our longtime lobbyist, is working with now. We would be looking at $50,000 for the long session, which would be in the 2019 year, and $45,000 for the short session, which would follow in year 2020. The one for this year is a budgeted amount, the second one you would consider in the upcoming budget. Also, a word of contract to purchase a sewer vac pump combination truck. Say that three times quickly. That is a very important piece of equipment for our wastewater services. Would ask that you consider purchasing that. It is a budgeted expenditure at $398,000 and finance that through a contract with BB&amp;T for five years at 3.29%. Would ask that you also consider awarding a contract for purchase of public safety cars. Those are eight Dodge Chargers for patrol cars and one Ford Explorer for our detectives' division. Those are for a total of $400,173. Those are also budgeted expenditures. Both of those purchases are in a little bit under budget. And also, awarding a financing for those vehicles to BB&amp;T for a three-year term at a rate of 3.0 budgeted expenditure to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus, our SCBA's for our firemen and our public safety officers. We would ask that you award that contract to municipal emergency services so that we can get those air packs and the equipment that comes with them replaced at a total cost of $383,855.15, and that is significantly under budget.
Do any council members wish to have any item removed from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Next is new business and on our agenda, and we have advertised for a public hearing in consideration for closing an alley extending northward from Concord Street between South Sterling and South Green Street. We are going to postpone that public hearing until December the 3rd. Other business, consideration of approval of a contract for the design and signalization of the intersection of South Sterling Street and a new connector road to West Parker Road. Sally?
Yes, Philip is coming up to talk about this. This is step one in the process to, step one of about 560 to construct a new connector road.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we, we are, so we've been awarded an ARC grant to construct this road, and, and Sally is not, not kidding when she said there's probably about 500 steps in, in, in getting this through to fruition. One of those steps, though, is, is because we are intersecting with a state road, which is South Sterling Street, we have to enter into a contract with a professional engineering firm to design the signalization of that intersection. And this is a, we have probably been through 100 of those steps to get to this point on, on hiring a engineering firm to design that. So, what you have before you is a proposal for a, a contract with John Davenport Engineering to design that signalization for the intersection of the connector road and South Sterling Street.
Any questions? Philip, any idea when they will start the design so that we can?
So, so, once, so, once we approve this, we, we get the North Carolina Department of Transportation to also agree to the contract, and then the, the engineering firm can sign and begin work. And they would, and their, their contract at a time, I believe, is 70 or 75 days from the time of notice to proceed.
Thanks. Council, have any questions for Philip? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve and enter into a construction agreement contract with John Davenport Engineering Incorporated, doing business as Davenport, for $15,000 for design of the signalization at the intersection of South Sterling Street with the new connector road to West Parker Road.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is, thank you, Philip, is consideration of a request for a Main Street Small Business Loan to Reese Winery LLC. Sally?
Yes, Reese Winery has decided to relocate their business to downtown Morganton at 116 North Sterling, Sterling Street. And in order to do that, there are some renovations required at, at the property so that they will have all the things that they need to conduct their business. Those renovations include some electrical work, some work dealing with sinks and, and prep sinks and things to do with the, the preparation in the product. Also, there's going to be some remodeling of the first floor for a tasting room and some retail space located there. The property owners are installing new restrooms and also agreeing to a personal guarantee for this loan, which is a requirement. And this is a loan with the payback money from our original Main Street Solutions Fund grant for downtown businesses. The amount of this loan would be $9,000, and it would be set up just like our other loans in that program and loan documents, just like we have before in this process.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve a Main Street Small Business Loan to Reese's Winery LLC in the amount of $9,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
I'm beginning to feel that we might need to kind of look at the number of breweries and wineries that we have located in the city limits. If I'm not mistaken, this might be about the sixth one that we have in the city. Let's be careful now that we don't get super saturated, so to speak.
So to speak.
And, and, and get more than we can handle. It might already be that way, in my opinion, so that's just my comment.
Okay, we'll take all the money.
This is all the money that we have available now, and the way that that works is when it is set up, there is a five-year period in which the loan repayments are made. it is set up, there is a five-year period in which the loan repayments are made. If those repayments are made on time and without any delays in that five-year period, then there is a relief of half of that funding that turns into a grant. The half that gets received during that period goes back into the revolving loan fund and is allowed to build up so that later, when there's a request, we have money to fund a new loan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of a resolution authorizing the city to submit an application to the Greater Hickory MPO slash College Street Complete Street Project. Sally?
That's hard to say, too, isn't it?
It is.
So back last year, when we were going through our master plan processes for downtown and for recreation, this is one of those projects that crossed over into both of those plans. As you all are very well aware, in looking at the 800 acres of state property, the Broughton Reuse District and that property, and then looking at downtown, we identified College Street as an opportunity for an area to make improvements in, in order to use as a connector from downtown to that property. In addition to just downtown, that also is going to connect up with our downtown Greenway Connector, which also has 10,000 steps in it because it, too, is federal funded, so that you could really connect the Broughton District all the way up College Street and all the way to Catawba Meadows eventually, and it will happen. So one of the things that we need to do in order to design, consider, and look at changing College Street, turning it into a pedestrian and bike-friendly street, is to get some grant funding that we have available to us, provide a city match at 20%, and then get with the design and then do the work to cause that to happen. You have some images in your information. Those images are pulled from the recreation master plan. I will tell you that those are suggestions, and part of this process will be going through the process to design and vet what these ultimately will look like and how it will get designed. There will be opportunities for your participation and for public participation in that process. Asking you tonight, because it's a rather lengthy process, to approve a resolution, which is the first step in asking for, yet again, some more federal funding that would be transportation-related. We are asking to apply for $2,649,000 in grant money. Our required match would be $662,400 in order to do College Street. And I believe when we talked about this in committees, I said we were stopping at Union, which was our original plan. This actually goes all the way to the bypass. So this would be Green Street to Fleming, to the bypass. Obviously, very different plans on each end of College Street because it, as it exists today, is very different. So we are asking you to consider adopting a resolution that would allow us to get in the competitive process to secure this grant money. It does not affect this year's budget. This is currently in our CIP, our Five-Year Capital Program, for next year. Obviously, as we go through this process, that gets vetted and gets prioritized, and the year that it happens depends on if we're approved and when we can spend the federal money.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing city staff to submit an application on behalf of the City of Morganton for STBG-DA grant funds through the LAPP program in the amount of $2,649,000 and committing $662,400 of city funds for a total of $3,312,000 to construct a facility accommodating multimodal traffic along College Street from Fleming Drive to Green Street.
Have a motion? And a second. Any questions from City Council? Sally, this is a competitive bid that we'll be making, correct?
It is, and the first part of this process goes through the Greater Hickory Planning Organization, and I will tell you that that has representation from the four counties and looks at projects happening all over the four county region, and that group supports this as one of our higher priority projects in the region.
The other question I have, if you look in the packet, we've got page 127. It shows College Street from Green to Union Street, and you can tell the bottom photo shows a turn lane. If you turn the page, that's from College Street to Fleming Drive with no turn lane. Like you said, there'll be chance to do that. I worry about down there at the tag office without a turn lane, what happens, that traffic may back up at the turn lane, so as we look...
It may, although there's not one there today.
I understand, so people pass on the right.
They do.
If we make a, if we make a bike lane over there, they'll pick off a few bicycles. So as we look, I just want to, because it shows in the first page on the first drawing, you know, that median.
And these will probably not end up being like this. These are just samples of how it will look. Obviously, as the, what will be required in this is hiring an engineering firm and doing some of that, that will involve traffic engineering and those traffic counts, all kinds of things for that.
And getting the $2 million. That's a biggie.
2.6.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on the agenda are 30-day notices. Due to upcoming vacancies, there's going to be on Burke Development Incorporated, we have a mayor's appointment coming up, and we have a community house board with six terms expiring. We don't make those appointments tonight, correct?
Correct. Those are in December.
Those are in December. We also have a, an appointment from City Council on the Historic Preservation Commission. Anyone interested? No, we need to take a motion on that, please. We, we have one, Dottie Irvin and Joan Malik have expired terms, so I'll have a motion for action.
And both of those are interested in continuing to serve if you so choose.
Forrest?
Sorry.
Move to reappoint to the Historic Preservation Commission, Dottie Irvin and Joan Malik, for terms to expire in November of 2021.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is a mayoral appointment to the Human Relations Council. I want to appoint John, Juan Monvevoi for a term to expire on May 3rd, 2020. That's a mayoral appointment. Any further thing, action to come before the board? Not, we stand adjourned.